We're going to call this meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board together. It is a little after seven. We were in a meeting that started at 5:30 and ran a little late, so we apologize for keeping you waiting, but that's what we were doing. The first thing up for this meeting on March 25th, 2019 is Spotlight. Do you want to take that, Aston? We're going to be hearing about the State Career Development DECA Conference participants.
Absolutely, and I would just like to introduce our advisor, Advisor Abby Lugo.
Thank you. So DECA is a student organization that prepares leaders and entrepreneurs. With over 215,000 high school and college members, this 70-year-old organization works collaboratively with businesses, providing insightful industry knowledge and the latest desired skills. Through applied learning, students complete rigorous project-based activities that require creative solutions. Our 13 St. Louis Park DECA students qualified to participate in role-play simulations or prepared events such as job interviews, sales demos, or presenting their 10- to 20-page research papers with 2,000 of their peers from the great state of Minnesota. Nine of our students placed in the top 12 of their event, top 12 in the state. Five of these students qualified to compete at the International Career Development DECA Conference held in Orlando, Florida, April 27th to the 30th. I couldn't be prouder of the accomplishments of these students who choose to participate in this after-before-school activity. So without further ado, you guys, these are the amazing DECA students. Congratulations, you guys. Emma Ammon? All right, Koby Davis? Yona Davis? Daniel Goldberg? Ann Anika Hansen's not here. Susanna, who? Anya Morrison? Ayelit is also not here. Oh yeah, we can still clap for Ayelit. Rachel Salzer? Paige Slavich? Tony Stadler? And also Rachel Stein, Rachel Young, and Olivia, who are not with us this evening. But great job, you guys.
Thank you all for taking the time to come, letting us celebrate your success. We're really proud. Thank you. All right, first thing, I'm going to review our agenda for the night. This is the call to order. We will then approve the agenda. On the agenda, we have open forum. We have the superintendent's report. We have discussion items, and on our discussion items, we have first Climate Action Plan progress. We have the Finance Advisory Committee recommendations. We have Family Engagement Multicultural Liaison Program. We have the Radon Test Report, Budget Assumptions, Student Fees, Student Transportation Service Agreement, the Strategic Plan Report, District Number Four, the Start Time Conversations. We have the School Board Listening Session Recap. We have Fiscal Year 20 Achievement and Integration Budget. We have Policy Development, the first reading of Policies 719, 721, and 799. We have Policy Development, the second reading of the 709 Student Transportation Policy and the 714 Fund Balance Policy. We then have the Consent Agenda, followed by the Action Agenda. On the Action Agenda, we have student fees, the Student Transportation Service Agreement, the American Indian Annual Compliance Agreement, the AT&amp;T Cell Phone Tower Lease Agreement, the Approval of Fiscal Year 20 Achievement and Integration Budget. Then we have Policy Development, second reading of 709 Student Transportation Safety and 714 Fund Balances. Then, if we're still awake, we will have Communications and Transmittals and adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Karen. Is there a second? Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That carries seven oh. So first up is Open Forum. If anyone is here to speak on Open Forum, we ask that you fill out a yellow slip and then give it to Julia, who's over there by the desk. She'll give it to me. Right now, we have two for Open Forum. And if you've done Open Forum before, even if you haven't, just slight review, we ask people to limit their time to three minutes. If they're here, people here on the same concern or the same point, we ask you to sort of consolidate your comments for us. We won't need to hear the same thing, you know, four different times. And we ask, of course, that we follow the St. Louis Park tradition of being respectful to each other and that there be no applause. We find applause sometimes silences people. And if you're going to applaud for one, you have to applaud for them all. That tends not to happen. So we want to be respectful listeners. So first up is Amelia. I apologize if I'm going to get the name wrong. Zemeldi? Thank you. You go right over to the podium, and you give us your name when you get there and your address, unless you're a student. And then Julia is going to start the timing over here. Julia's at the end of the... This is Julia, and she'll just give you some clues when you're getting close to the end of the three minutes, okay?
And you want my full address?
Yes.
My name's Amelia Zemwald. I live at 4201 Wooddale Avenue South. I wanted to comment on the school start time proposals. And next year, we'll have a student in third grade and a student in kindergarten. And the proposals have me concerned for a number of reasons. And I know that middle school start times right now are too early. And there's definitely wiggle room on the elementary start times, because they're quite late. However, I think that the proposals is basically flip-flopping the concerns from the middle school to a greater number of students. Instead of six, three years at the middle school, it's now six years at the elementary. I also think that our elementary students are our largest, most vulnerable group of students. Kids that young don't always have the same sense and awareness that kids do at middle school. And one of the concerns that I don't think has really been addressed thoroughly is the safety of having small children out during times when it's dark. One thing that I really like about St. Louis Park is a lot of students are able to walk to school or ride their bike at the elementary level. And with the proposed start times, I believe that that would reduce those opportunities. Unfortunately, there's some pretty sobering statistics on children and getting to and from school and accidents happening. An average of 19 children die getting on and off the bus every year or waiting at the bus stops. I think that by asking our small children to wait at the bus stops in the dark, or to walk to school in the dark, is putting them at risk. And I think that needs to be addressed. Every year, almost 100 students die walking to or from school. And I think that getting out at 2:15 puts a lot of families in a bad spot, where they might let a kid walk home at a time or at an age where they wouldn't normally do that, because otherwise, they're forced to pay for childcare after school. And the childcare costs here are quite high. You know, it's $15 a day for a family, for a child. Those costs are likely going up, as Kids Place has indicated. And I just would like to ask you to please, before you make any votes, that you take the safety of our youngest, most vulnerable students into consideration and that there should be a plan in place of how to address that before any vote is ever made.
Thank you. All right, next up is Kim Opitz. Wasn't first, Kim?
Okay, I can't even see that, actually. Got to have my glasses on. So you need to wave if I get to one. All right. Hi, my name is Kim Opitz. I live at 8001 West Franklin. We have one child at Aquila. We have two at the middle school. And I wanted to share a few highlights from our first two years at the middle school. The Emoji Movie. Probably 10 times. Mr. Bean. Mulan. Despicable Me. The Best of the Big Bang Theory, a 20-minute compilation on YouTube. College Humor Videos. And Saturday Night Live. These are the things that our middle schoolers are watching when they have a substitute teacher who doesn't, who can't find the curriculum, when they have 10 minutes at the end of class, when they're celebrating Tuesday. It goes on and on. And I have talked to Aston about this. I've talked to Les about it. I brought it up at the Site Council at the middle school last fall. I said, "My children in OT have movie Monday and film Friday." And the OT curriculum person at the meeting said, "Well, that's not possible, because we have lessons for OT." And I said, "Well, that's not what they're doing in my kids' OT class. They're watching these movies." So I spent a little time looking at our technology policy for the district. For one, the district tells me that if I want to request a different curriculum, I can. Meaning if there's something, I'm not talking educational videos. I'm talking this stuff that I just listed. I want the option to opt out of this. But most of all, I think we can do better. I think we need to pay attention and start counting how many minutes. If my daughter spent two hours a week watching movies in class, that's not fair to her. That's not fair to our education. So I wanted to get that on the record, and that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So my pause is because I'm having trouble reading the name. So... It looks like Zumarble. At the N-Z-U-M-A-R-B-L-E is the last name. I'm having trouble reading the first name. This is school start time. Is that yours? Did you do two? Oh, maybe, okay. Okay, I had four slips, but I think only, but I think there's some duplicates. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak at Open Forum? Anybody else? Okay, I want to thank those of you... Yeah, go ahead, Marty.
My name's Marty Stillman. I live at 2671 Inglewood Avenue South. I was one of the members of the School Start Time Committee. So just briefly, I am here to speak in favor of the recommendations moved forward by the committee. I too respect the respectful nature of some of the discussions that I've had and the concerns that elementary families have raised. I want to just review, from an academic and health standpoint, the increased sleep time. This is the increased sleep time for adolescents has been associated with improved outcomes in core classes like math and reading. Insufficient sleep in adolescents is associated with serious mental health risks, including depression, substance use, and suicide. Insufficient sleep is known to be closely related to mood disturbances, cognitive difficulties, and increased risk-taking behavior. Increased sleep time has been associated with decreased tiredness and absenteeism, and these gains in studies have were even stronger in at-risk students. Adolescents who do not get enough sleep are more likely to be overweight and not engage in daily physical activity. Decreased sleep in adolescents has been associated with increased injury in sport. The American Academy of Pediatrics, which oversees all age children, has recommended that middle and high school start at 8:30 or later. So in the interest of limited time, this is not to say that the committee, or I, or others, don't care about elementary families and their concerns. My point would be, let's figure out how to address those concerns and change the start time for the health and safety of our adolescent students. And so I would oppose that issues of darkness in the morning, we got it, let's figure it out. So I don't have an easy answer. I don't say that there's an easy answer. But I would say, let's take these five months and try to figure it out. I would say, after-school childcare. Do the committee care about that? Do I care about that? Do others? Yes. But I'd say, let's take that, figure it out, and move forward. Kids Place is working on it. I haven't been told. School Sports, they're working on it. So I believe that these concerns, I'm concerned about them too. But to just say, therefore, it trumps the health and safety of our adolescent students, that concerns me. As a committee member, as a doctor, that concerns me, because the science is so strong for how important it is that adolescents receive their sleep. So again, I too want to respectfully say that I care about all the concerns. I just would like to see us work as a community to address the health and safety of adolescents and then work together to address the concerns of elementary families.
Thank you, Marty. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Sarah Muchler. I wasn't planning on speaking, because I don't really have anything prepared, and I'm a little nervous. Oh, 2720 Colorado Avenue. Sorry. I have two elementary students, and the only thing I just wanted to add to this discussion is I agree with a lot of what has been said tonight. And I do think that we need to look at the health and welfare of our adolescent students. I've read those same studies, and I agree. What concerns me about all of this has really just been the process. I have felt that, in order, as a parent, for me to fully support this, I want to know the answers. I don't want to just say, "Let's vote on this and have it go through, and we'll figure out everything else later." I want to know, as a parent, that there is a plan for having affordable after-school care, enrichment programs that I've heard thrown around that would happen in the elementary schools. I want to hear what the plan is for middle school and high school athletics and the issues that they have with activity buses and students having to leave school significantly early with the later times. I just think that those are fair questions to ask and to have answers, if, as somebody in the community, to support that, to support whatever choice the school board makes. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else that would like to speak at Open Forum? Thank you all. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this evening, for my Superintendent's Report, I would like to share information connected to our district mission and strategic plan. And before I jump into that, I just wanted to acknowledge the students on the first row from our Roots and Shoots group here in St. Louis Park. We'll hear from them shortly. They'll be talking about the 2040 Climate Action Plan and some commitments that they're looking for us as a score district to make, and our partnership over the past several months. And specifically, I would like to call out one of the members, and correct me if I mispronounce your name. Is it Arun? Arun, if you would please stand, because last... So I saw Arun the other day at the middle school, and I gave him a high five and congratulated him. But I actually, at my Superintendent's Report on the 11th, I acknowledge you for your accomplishment in making the National Spelling Bee. So if we could give him a round of applause. That's a significant accomplishment. We're extremely proud of you, and I'm just excited that you're here in our school district and representing our school so well, actualizing our mission. So thank you for being here, and thank you to the rest of the Roots and Shoots members. So I'll jump in, and I just want to kind of continue along that theme. There's a lot that we have to be proud of here in St. Louis Park, and I would like to acknowledge our students at the middle school, who are going to the National Quiz Bowl Championship. So we have Axel Abrasum, Ryan Dusser, Finn Gideon, and Rose Huzey, who qualify for the national tournament based on their performance at De La Salle last weekend. So we're extremely proud of them. They'll be competing at the National Championship Tournament at the Higher Regency O'Hare in Rosemont, Illinois, on May 10 through the 12th. I would also like to take a moment to just thank the over 120 different representatives from colleges across the Midwest that came out to our annual college fair last week at the high school. We had a significant turnout of students, and this continues to be a great way to expose our students to post-secondary opportunities here locally and in the Midwest region. Lastly, I would just like to take a second and acknowledge all of the families who came out last week for kindergarten registration. We're extremely proud and excited to welcome the class of 2032. I can't believe I'm even saying it. 2032. Right, as a parent of a student in the class of 2031, we're excited. We're looking forward to them becoming a part of our organization and our school district. And I would also like to take this opportunity for any parent that missed kindergarten registration last week, know that you can still register your child, and we're looking forward to having you here in St. Louis Park Public School. So welcome, and I'm looking forward to getting to know each of you over the next several years. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Osai. So we're moving on to the discussion items, and I'm glad we get to start with the Climate Action Plan progress.
Hi, we're the class of 2025, and we came to talk about global warming and why we should stop it. I'm Tanner Holly, and I go to the SLP Middle School. I think we should stop global warming, because it's affecting our surroundings and living things as we speak. We are also glad you're considering this plan, and we hope you pass it tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Kraft, and I'm a sixth writer at the middle school. I'm here because we're going to get the world after you're done with it. And if you do go green, then it will set a good example for other schools in the state. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Asha. I wanted to say that... I think it's good that... I think it's good that we're helping to stop climate change and that it's not fair that we get a dirty world, and it's not our fault.
Hi, I'm Arun Fajran Sabatnik. I am from the class of 2025 and go to the St. Louis Park Middle School. I think that we should switch to renewable energy and move towards net-zero greenhouse gas emissions. The recent polar vortex was influenced by the climate crisis and warm weather in the Arctic and nearby. And if Minnesota cancels four or more days of school, then there's something wrong. We really need to do something. A very long time passed since our last visit to the school board in February of 2018, and we've been waiting impatiently for something to happen, and we're hoping to see it before we graduate in 2025. Even though it will now be 2030, we hope that progress is made towards the goal today and in the future, because we can't afford any more delays. Thank you, and here's Roots and Shoots.
Hi, I'm Gabe Kaplan. I'm a sophomore here at the high school.
I'm Katie Christensen, and I'm a senior at the high school.
I'm Rachel Matson. I'm also a senior at the high school.
So before we get into the specifics of exactly what we're asking for, I want to provide a little bit of background on Roots and Shoots and what we've been doing. So for about a year and a half now, we've been advocating for the school board to adopt some of the same Climate Action Plan goals as the city council already adopted. And in order to do that, we've met with Superintendent Osai and the facilities manager. And through those meetings, I think we've had six or seven now, we've really worked on our goals and what we're asking for to make sure that not only is it feasible for the district to achieve them, but also it'll be beneficial for the district to pursue them. Oh, and our work here in St. Louis Park as Roots and Shoots has made it possible for a state group called Minnesota Can't Wait to form and take similar actions at the statewide level. In Minnesota Can't Wait, we're working on the Minnesota Green New Deal, which we're going to introduce, I think, next week or the week after. And we've met with important legislators and the governor several times, and we continue to work on that.
Hi, I'm Shannon Pence, and I'm the Environment and Sustainability Coordinator for the city and have been working with the students here over the past few years. They helped us develop our plan, and some of them here have, and some of their predecessors. And this is just a real quick overview on the screen here of the sub-goals that we are trying to achieve by 2030 in order to keep us on track. So the ultimate overarching goal is climate neutrality by 2040. You've been hearing the students talk about this. And then this is how, in the plan, it's broken out by seven different categories of where we can improve in our decision-making and also provide either educational and outreach efforts, use policy as a lever as well, encourage and incentivize, and as well as partner and continue to partner with youth and businesses and other large energy users in our community to get them to help us all reach our overarching goal of climate neutrality. Businesses and school districts and other organizations that are not technically what you would think of as businesses all kind of fall under the commercial and industrial sector that's based on the amount of energy they use. So just keep that in mind. If you see things that are for businesses or programs that we're putting out there, it's really to focus on those larger users that include school district buildings, municipal buildings, and some of our bigger representation in the community that may not be a traditional business, but might be a not-for-profit or a nonprofit or other kind of organization as well. This is a little bit of a small screen, or a small screenshot of the business as usual. If we did nothing on the right-hand side there, if we did nothing at all and the utilities weren't committed to making improvements, we would continue to see emissions increases over time. And instead, we'd like to see those numbers go all the way down to the far-right corner to zero emissions by the year 2040. I'd like to just highlight, though, that the business or commercial-industrial sector is nearly double the emissions that output of that of the residential sector. And so it's very critical that we all partner together and work together for those larger users, those building owners that use a lot of energy, to help keep us on our track and keep the momentum going, because they have a lot more power and ability to make that change more quickly than trying to get every homeowner to do something as well. But we want to, of course, encourage... homeowner to do something as well. But we want to, of course, encourage work in that area on top of the other commercial industrial sectors. So there's multiple ways that we're attacking this and trying to move things forward, but definitely want to look at those larger users, commercial industrial sector. And we want to continue to partner with the students going forward. And we've had some great meetings and I look to, look to them for their leadership and really look forward to seeing what comes up next with the school district because we can help each other achieve these goals.
So we were very excited to read through the school district's strategic plan and see a lot of the ideas and the goals that we're pushing for represented in this plan. That's starting with one of the mission outcomes, saying that all students will voluntarily and continually contribute to society. And that's what we're really pushing for is for us as students to have a voice in something that will obviously impact us so severely. So Rachel is going to take us through some of the strategies.
So one of the first strategies that we feel is very important, that we strongly agree with is structures and systems because we believe that you can't have an end goal without having the stepping stones set in stone. And so it's really nice to be able to work with everyone to have these plans and these steps to reach that like further outcome, that further goal. And we believe it's a, it's a great strategy just to have in general, just to get everything done. Our second, or one of the other ones we really love is community collaboration. And that bottom photo is actually the Climate Action Plan launch party that Roots and Shoots did that brought over 200 community members in. And so that just shows that, you know, Roots and Shoots and everyone cares about the community, cares about everyone's voice and not just the people who are, you know, at the top, but everyone in the community in St. Louis Park in general with Roots and Shoots and just with all of you guys in general. And then the last strategy we want to just point out is facilities. And it's because we can't have a clean future, we can't have a green future if everything that we are in, if this building and every other building we continue to be in is not up to date and is rotting. So we have met with like, like Tom Bravo and Superintendent O'Sai and had meetings about that specifically, about the facilities and keeping those up to date so that we can stay green for longer than, or for the future.
And so now looking at some exciting initiatives in terms of reaching some of the goals that the city has, like Shannon mentioned, like Rachel mentioned, like Gabe mentioned, the continued partnership with Roots and Shoots. And in general, the student body is obviously something that we look forward to continuing. One of the specific projects is a display of the school's progress towards the goals that hopefully you will adopt and the goals that the city has. Another one of the exciting initiatives that we're going to look at are current facilities, projects and progress. If Mr. Bravo is going to take us through that.
Chair Gores, Superintendent O'Sai, school board members, we want to quickly give you an overview because I think this is very important. We're supporting what the students are saying. In the referendum that was passed two years ago by the community graciously giving us the money to start construction, we put in place a standard which is sustainable, which we're looking at green. And everything we do, we thoroughly look at the whole process of it, of how we save energy and how we reduce our carbon footprint as well as going to renewable energy. So with that, quickly, I won't bore you with the strategic four because they talked about it, but it's the city of St. Louis Park climate goals. But I wanted to just kind of share one. Well, how we're going to measure this is through our B3 benchmark. And our B3 benchmark tells us where we are today. And then I'm going to share with you, using the Energy Design Assistance Program through the state, how we're going to get to a five star, which means zero, what, what means more or less is what, what they're requesting and what we're going to give is zero emissions and lower the carbon footprint. So right now, in the high school, we're at about two point three stars in, in energy consumption and so forth. But the projects that we're going to be starting this year and finishing up in three years, we know we're going to be hitting that five star because we're going to be saving over 306,000 kilowatts of electricity by using LEDs, by using other types of alternative resources, the thing like that. Our gas consumption's going to be going down. And also, we're going to be saving over a million gallons of water with everything that we're doing because we're putting in different types of units and drinking fountains within the district so that it saves on water, but yet it purifies it and makes it so that it meets the needs of what the students want too. So I, we have one for every school showing where we're at. And, you know, we're not proud of where we're, where the stars are, but we're happy of where we're going to be. And this is our first gauge. Believe it or not, Park Spanish Immersion, because it's going into Cedar Manor, probably has the highest one right now, but as you can see, that's where the goal is going towards. That one's going to have the most current energy efficient products and also again lighting LED, which will reduce the emissions of what we have to the regulatory agencies. So I know I'm going through this really fast, but I, we can share this with you through the school board. But you can see, we're going to be making some big, big feats on reducing energy and so forth. Not only by the energy itself, but we feel like the sustainability is more than just that. So I want to get into this slide right here. We have made a commitment in this district to go with all paints that are zero VOC, none whatsoever. That's a big feat. We have, we accomplished that in our first year and we continue accomplishing that. All materials are durable. Cradle to grave. Everything we buy from carpet to furniture to, to whatever is not going to go to the landfill anymore. It's going to be recycled, reused. So that's one of the commitments we've made and that's a commitment that we're going to follow through and we are being successful in that. Other things that we're be doing, again, with our water and so forth, we're just telling you that not only electricity and so forth is something that we want to reduce, we want to make this district sustainable, 100% sustainable. And that is our, our mission and goal. Finally, I want to kind of share with everybody, we, we're also looking at different types of ways to reduce recycling and organics. In the last four years, in this last slide I'm going to share, oops, I don't have that. The slide that I want to share with you is that we reduced, there it is right there, 20,000, maybe I don't seem like a lot, but we reduced $20,000 in just trash. And I think that's, in the past few years, the district has focused on reducing waste in cafeteria lunchrooms. In that time, we have been reduced to 20,000 recycling and organics. And we've increased, of course, our recycling organics by 4,000. But what that means more or less is that we're saving more money by putting it in, spending it in the right spots by organics and recycling and not put it in trash. So we're, we're on task and we're supporting the students because my grandkids are young and I want my grandkids to see this world too. Any questions?
So I don't know if it's for Tom or for the group.
We have one last slide, but, sorry. It's okay. Just in close, the resolution that school board you have standing in front of you is the Climate Leadership, Climate Leadership Resolution. And this resolution commits St. Louis Park School District to matching the city's climate action plan goals, which Shannon talked about, as well as highlighting the five 2030 midterm goals. So in light of the progress that, that we've seen and also the progress that we have yet to make, we request that the school board adopt these aggressive climate action plan goals. And now are ready for questions.
Thanks for the presentation. That was, that was very, from, from everybody. My question had to do with the renovations that we're doing at all the schools and just, you could comment on, what are the items that are, are making the largest difference of the efficient windows or insulation or what is it that's helping?
I think the biggest thing that we're kind of looking at, of course, is electrical consumption. And right now, you know, most districts throughout the state, we sort of have either T4s or T8s. And what that is, is a certain type of lights and we have them in here. With LEDs, you reduce it down from, and don't quote me 100% to like six cents a kilowatt hour to .001 cent a kilowatt hour. So by doing that, we don't need to use a lot of energy. So also then, to make up that energy that we want to use, we're going to be looking at solar panels on the roofs. We're going to be looking at other types of alternative energies. We talked to Excel Energy and they have a commitment like this group, by 2030 or 2040, they're going to go with 80% solar farms. We're going to be tapping into that. So electrical consumption is a big one for us that we see when we, when we did our energy study. Of course, then the water is a big one that we see with different types of drinking fountains, more energy efficient, more fountains that are filtered through so that, you know, the students can start using. Because kids are bringing the water bottles to school and bringing them in the classroom. And we want to be able to continue having them do that, but kind of save energy on that. Does that answer your question?
Hi, this one's more for a question for the city in that the school district kind of has a, it's all enclosed in a little group of people that we can kind of control and kind of manage through. But the city is a bigger, how are you guys planning on having those businesses adhere to the, the activities that you guys want to take place here?
Well, there's some things we're doing this year, like forming a part, we have a partnership reform with Twin, with Twin West Chamber to include questions in a, in a survey with them to find out what are those either hindrances or things, barriers and or challenges that they're facing when asked, answering questions about environmental issues. Or if they're already doing things, we want to learn what those are to better engage. And if we can learn what those challenges are and what the incentives are, then we can form programming and, and meetings to bring, to draw that kind of business community to, and especially from our outreach efforts that the youth are doing and others are doing, bring them to that so that they're saying, yeah, I'm willing to listen to a session on this, but we want to, these are the things we're interested in hearing about. These are the things we already know about. So that's one thing. And then through policy, we are looking at different kinds of levers that we can trigger for larger commercial industrial users to have to be a little more energy efficient and/or use renewables. So we're trying to find the ways that we can do that in our existing ordinances and policies and then develop new ones that are outlined in our plan and going forward with those. And then also supporting legislative efforts at the state level too, for things like energy stretch codes and things like that. So.
I was just curious because you thought we were talking and I was thinking, what part of St. Louis Park School District represents the city's reduction in their energy?
We don't know the exact energy. I don't personally know the exact energy use and the utilities don't allow us to dig into a particular entity and know exactly their energy use. But we can work in partnership with Tom and using the B3 system to compare where they're at and learn better about what percentage they are. So that's something we could come back to.
All right. While you're stuck, thank you for all your efforts. If someone wanted to learn more about your group, I know you have a Facebook page, Roots and Shoots. You have a webpage too.
SLP Roots and Shoots Environmental Group. And I believe you also have an Instagram, which is SLP Roots and Shoots. And are there any more questions? This is really more of a comment. I just wanted to say thank you very much. I love this collaboration so much, not just between our students and the community and the students in the district, but the students from different sites. And I also want to say I recognize a few of you from your writing class, working on persuasive writing and persuasive speaking. I just want to tell you, you did a really good job. You're nailing your assignment. Well done.
I thought of that too. I also attended some of those writing classes and I remember saying, connecting it to the strategic plan and the mission of the district is a great strategy. And you guys, you absolutely did that. So you nailed it. I wanted to know about, more about the, the tracking, we talked about a tracking display and that, is that about sort of how we go, it's like a thermometer of how we, how we're doing?
Yeah, exactly. So we have a work group in Roots and Shoots that's currently working. We have a display board in the cafeteria and that's going to be one device that we're going to use to present the information relevant to the five goals that are highlighted in the resolution and then have some space for exciting announcements as we reach the goals and have new projects that we're excited about.
So, so here's my question because I'm learning from you as every time you come here. I don't know about paint that is zero VOC. What does that mean? And, and tell us why we care both at home and here.
Zero VOC is just, just pretty much in a nutshell, the carbon that comes off there. You know, they put chemicals in, in a lot of paints and so forth, and it gives off emissions. So what we're saying is that all the paints that we're using don't give off emissions anymore. So it's, it's, it's the best type you get. Now, is it the most durable? We'll see.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you so much for, for taking the time to come to us, to care about this, to keep pushing us. We don't have your resolution on our action agenda today because we got it later, but I assure you, we'll be talking about it.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. And if there are no more questions, I'd, if it's all right, like to close with a testimony from an organization called Climate Parents, which did a lot of work in supporting us.
Hi, my name is Ian LaRoe and I'm the parent of two spirited children. I don't live in St. Louis Park, but that's kind of the point I wanted to make here. I'm with the, I'm a Sierra Club volunteer with a program called Climate Parents. And our purpose is to help move school districts around the state and country to adopt 100% clean energy. So St. Louis Park has the opportunity to become the first school district in the state to pass a resolution like this for climate action. And this will help us build momentum for the other districts where other parents and I are mobilizing to kind of take this along. So we're really excited about the possibility of, of you guys being the, like, put the flag at the top of the mountain and then other people can see it and find it. So there's just a few things that there's, you've heard a lot about what we're proposing, but I've got just a couple of points about why. Some things and the reason I, I personally got into this whole platform and this volunteering is that focusing on schools is a very proactive thing I could do. And some of the points that really inspired me were, one, it's an opportunity to reinvest money into students in classrooms. As I spoke to earlier, schools are major consumers of energy and it's the, it's the largest expense for most school districts after the personnel. So this commitment can save school district money that can be reinvested into students in classrooms. It also expands educational opportunities. So within this project, like the, like the board she talked about in the lunchroom, you can create exciting real-world climate curriculum into classes in science, technology, engineering, and math. It creates new jobs. And most of all, I love the real-world impact. Because school districts are a leading consumer of energy in many municipalities, a commitment to clean energy can be powerful enough to have a financial influence for a company like Excel Energy. So they're saying, well, do we make this coal plant? Well, wait, we've got this huge customer of ours is committed to clean energy. I guess we better invest more in solar. So being able to make a difference like that can be incredibly powerful. So this is a first step. Hope you guys take these things into consideration over the next month. And I'm grateful for all the work that Roots and Shoots and I Matter did getting us here. And excited to be part of the Client Parent Team. And anyone here is welcome to come talk to us and be part of the client program, Client Parent Program as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. So you are welcome to stay. You are also welcome to go home and do your homework. Whatever, whatever fits in your life best. Right. So next up on the agenda is the Finance Advisory Committee Recommendations. And as always, a few folks will introduce yourselves and then we'll go forward with the presentation. Thanks.
Hi, my name is David Larson and I also have Julia Fredericksen with me here. We are both part of the Finance Advisory Committee. We're a couple of citizen members. We both have children in the high school right now. I've also had a couple that have graduated over the couple, the last couple of years too. So, so we're happy to be part of the group that sits down periodically. You can see our, here's what we're going to end up talking about, the, the members, our purpose, considerations, some of the revenue drivers, fund balances, current economic considerations and some recommendations that the group has for the superintendent. So here are, on the left, again, the community members, Julia's standing here, Steve, myself, Katie Lawler, and then Joe Tatalovich. Katie Lawler, and then Joe Tatal, which Mary also have been participating with us too. So thank you very much for coming in once a month and meeting with everybody. And then on the staff, we've got Aston and Brooks and then Patricia, who is the new, I call her CFO for the district, I guess she's the business director. So, and I did want to say, as we start out here, the Citizen Committee, at least portion of the fact, are thrilled with the addition of Patricia to the group. She's already a great addition to the staff. I think she clearly seeks transparency and credibility with stakeholders, along with accuracy in her financials and projections. She's a great resource to Brooks and to the rest of the accounting staff and she seems to be very strategic as well. So feel lucky to have her. And I'd also take a shout out to Brooks, who wore a lot of hats over the last six, eight months and worked a lot of hours to keep the ship afloat while the prior director left and before Patricia could come on. So wanted to take that time right now too. So, thank you. All right, so our purpose is to advise the administration, the school board on economic and school finance issues and to build community trust in the district finances. Some of the things that we talked about during our meetings and we had, we held a number of meetings, there were one, two, three, four, five of them so far and there's one more coming up. Excuse me. So one of the first things that Patricia did when she came on was to put out an RFP for a new audit firm and validated some costs and ultimately a new selection was made and I think everyone is supportive of that. We also spent quite a bit of time talking about revenue drivers and really here, it's a combination of enrollment, the basic formula and then the special ed are really kind of the big three that come into play as well as probably the fourth would be the levy that the district receives on a per student basis, about $21 or $2200 per student that comes in the door. And then wanted to talk also, we were, we spent quite a bit of time talking about some of our emerging priorities, including the general fund balance policy, the financial planning model, the budget planning timeline and framework, and then also how to get some more FAC membership expansion. So if anyone wants to come and talk numbers once a month with folks, raise your hand and we'll find a way to get you on. It's really riveting. Trust me, it is. All right, so again, the majority of the revenue that we get is going to come from what are called adjusted pupil units, which basically if we've got a child that's from kindergarten through fifth grade, one child is one APU. If we've got a sixth to 12th grader, one child is 1.2 APUs. Add them up, that's how you come up with your adjusted pupil units. And that becomes a basis of the funding then from the state for its primary fund revenue that's coming through. So then here, again, one of the biggest drivers then is, okay, what is our enrollment? And so you can see from here, really what we are, to a great degree, is facility constrained. We have been, we have had a full house in all of the buildings for a number of years. Once we, a few years ago when we had shut down Cedar Manor, combined buildings and so on, we've been using open enrollment in order to fill the seats that have not been filled by St. Louis Park students. And generally speaking, each one of those folks that you see in the gray bar, which now is 797 kids, is, there's revenue following them from the state. So at a, well, in totality, about 14,000 between the various buckets, I'd say the core buckets are about $10,000 a student. So we've been able, by bringing those students in, we've been able to keep up the revenues at about as high as we can, excuse me, throughout the, you know, the last four or five years. We have seen a bit of a falloff to some extent, the last year or so, for what it's worth, in our, in our numbers. We had, in the number of APU's actually fell this year. It had been rising from 5073, 5082, 5088 up through 2018. This year, it looks like we're going to come in at about 50/50 and ultimately what we're projecting is 5,035 APUs for fiscal 19, or fiscal 20. And you'll notice on here, there's a, there's a reference to, is that better? All right. You'll notice on here, there's a reference to a cohort survival rate and part of what Patricia brought as a tool for us was looking at some of the birth rates in Hennepin County and then extrapolating those into how many potentially are going to start out in our, in our grade schools and work their way up through middle and high school. So there's, what we typically see is a group at kindergarten and that maybe falls off a little bit as we're moving on. And then when we get to sixth grade, there's some open enrollment that comes in and then again at ninth grade, as folks are entering the high school, those tend to be the two times where we get the most open enrollment students come through. But we are projecting at least through the next couple of years that those are going to remain relatively flat. In fiscal 22, we start getting some buildings open that are being expanded, the middle school in particular. But, and in total, there's probably about 350 kids that we can add into the system once this, once all of the expansion is taken care of, but that will come in over stages too. We're not going to have 350 kids show up in fiscal 22. So I would point out here on this slide though too, we have seen, as you can tell, that gray bar is kind of rising relative to the, to the number of students that participate in those parks. So you go back to 2016 and 14.8% of the students came from open enrollment. Today it's 17.4 and if the 350 kids potentially were added in here again, we'd be up, you know, at basically 25% open enrollment. So there will be a need as we go forward to focus on that as those buildings become available. So the other thing, and I don't know if I'm jumping ahead on some of these slides or not, but I know one thing that Aston has been trying to do is to retain some of the students from St. Louis Park that have chosen to open enroll and leave the district. And so one of the things he's doing is he's contacting people who are leaving and trying to figure out why are they leaving the district and are there things that we can do to prevent them from leaving the district because those funds go out with them. And in theory, we built the buildings for our kids, not just to expand open enrollment. So, you know, we applaud his efforts for that and if he's able to find some, some common threads about what may retain some of those students, that would be great. So, all right. Another revenue driver then is the formula allowance increases that the state provides. So you can look back, in fiscal 10 and 11, there was no increase at all and they typically do it over two years to the, to the state funded formulas. In 12 and 13, it was a 1% increase. 14 and 15, it went from one and a half to two and that's where it's been basically staying for the last, for the last few years. And that's actually where we are as a group saying we should project in our increases for this next biennium, which would start here. There's, we do think there are a number of competing priorities, if you would, for, at the state. And so I don't know and the FAC isn't comfortable that there's going to be increases above that. So what we're really thinking, at least for the next year, to plan on a 2% increase. So another thing that we looked at, and these aren't going to be huge drivers, but are, we looked at, and this was Patricia came forward and said, let's look at our food service and our student athletic fees and parking. And so the next slide kind of highlights some of the, where we at St. Louis Park laid out relative to some of the other school districts for lunch costs. And so what we're proposing ultimately is that there be about a dime increase in 2020 to the, to the lunch costs and that'll generate probably about $60,000 revenue. So not a huge driver, but in a $65 million budget, but it's, it helps. And then if you look at the fees here that we charge for athletics, again, we've been way underneath some of the averages and so our suggestion would be to basically push those up about $35 for the, for the non-hockey and 40 bucks for hockey. The school board typically has a policy or has initiated a policy in the past calling for the general unassigned fund balance to not fall below 6%, which with a $65 million budget equates to about 3.6, 3.7 million dollars. So, and now our auditors have, our past auditors have suggested a 10% number. And it's one of the things that as we move into next year, we'd like to sit down and maybe have a discussion at the FAC level about what should that be? Should it be six? Should it be 10? Should it be somewhere in between? And, and as our expenses do go up every year, even if they're going up a couple percent, you got to keep in mind too that the balance we need to carry then, whatever the floor is that we established that we can't, you know, the floor is coming up underneath us as well. So the, I'm sorry, what? Okay. So again, what are we trying to do here? We want to maintain adequate cash flow throughout the year to retain programs and, and a cushion against the impact of unexpected cost or funding shortfalls. And there are, you know, in part, there's a need, there's timing differences obviously between revenues coming in and revenues going out. So Patricia and her staff need to have the ability to have some cash on hand to cover some of those, those things, as well as unexpected costs. For instance, if, if, if spending money is delayed or is reduced, that we can absorb some of those, some of those costs as we go forward. So in looking at some of the drivers then for where did we come up with the 2%, we looked at the other graph and said, well, that's kind of historically where they've been the last number of years. And we do sense that the state of Minnesota economic outlook is slowing since November. You know, we've got a relatively low employment rate, that we do have some budget reserves. We were between 500 and a billion of excess. I think the governor right now is talking about a 2% increase. So that's kind of where we ended up coming in at for the, as our recommendation for the next biennium. We had 5,050 APUs represented by 4,555 students is what we're projecting for 2020. That can, you know, again, a slight reduction or a continuance of a slight reduction there. We're suggesting that we hold the basic formula increase at 2% and the special education revenue is relatively flat. So we, we do want to sit down and spend more time at the FAC level studying the fund balance and helping suggest a potential policy there. We're looking at some of the student fees, which you've already talked about, and then focusing on managing expenses. And as it relates to that, within the budget for the city or for the, for the school district, about 83% of that $65 million that we spend annually is represented by salaries and benefits for the, for the staff. And one of the concerns that we have is that over the last few years, we have given 4% per year increases in salaries and benefits and yet we've only seen 2% increases in the income side of this. And we can't push more students in the door. So how we, and you know, so there's a disconnect when we've got a 2% increase in revenue and a 4% increase in the, in the primary costs that we've got. And this has resulted in some deficits over the last couple of years, which seem to be expanding. The deficit in, in 2017 was about 350,000. The deficit in 2018 was about 550,000. And right now, we're looking at a budget deficit that's projected at $1.7 million for this coming year, which is going to put our unassigned budget or unassigned funds down to about $8.6 million. And I think that's reflected on the next slide. Nope, there is no next slide. Never mind. Who took that slide out? So that is a primary concern of ours, that somehow those have got to, at least in the interim here, have got to come more into equilibrium. You know, simple math, a 2% increase in revenue would suggest that's kind of the ceiling on what we can offer for salaries and benefits in order to, to maintain the viability of that fund. I think there's also some, some potential items as we're coming into this expansion of the district and we're finding that potentially other expenses and so on are going to start rolling on, we need to start thinking about how we're going to fund those. And, and if this deficit for 2019 actually comes in at 1.5, 1.7, that's going to, going to erode that balance further. By the time we get two, three years out, that excess is going to be down around 5, 6 million, which is, you know, below what our auditors would recommend and nearing the floor of what the board in the past has talked about as having a minimum balance. So those are kind of our thoughts, but we did want to point out here too, that over the last year or so, there was an RFP again put out for the annual audit. We have changed auditors. I think everyone on the FAC is pretty happy with that. We had talked about having a new projection model and Patricia came in and she actually put that in place already. So she's figuring out all the, how that tweaks and works and, and that's one of the focuses that we'll have going forward. We're talking about raising some of the lunch fees and athletic fees. The recapture, the student retention is huge. I think that's going to be a big part of, you know, how we continue to, to fill the seats with as many St. Louis Park kids as we can. I thought it was interesting that there's about 500 kids a year who opt out and go to other districts. And so to the extent you could find a way to keep even a third of those kids, that'll take care of about a third of the seats that we're going to be opening up here in, you know, after '22. So that, I think, covers it. So any questions from anybody?
Yes, I have a couple.
Yeah.
So this is the two increases, the one on the, the meals.
Yep.
Of which I think we're talking about increasing it anyway.
Yep.
As we become more organic or more scratch cooking, we're going to have to increase it anyway.
Right.
And then we'll be more closer to the Edina price ranges. So I think that's going to organically happen. But the athletic increase of basically 40 bucks, right?
Yep. 35, 35 bucks. Hockey gets 40 because they get a bunch of ice.
Have you looked into it, or I guess Andy could look into, participation? Because I imagine that some people, because we're at a district that we boast that anybody can participate in anyway.
Right.
Because we just are like that. We want everybody to be able to participate. And by increasing it, a small percentage, that may push out quite a number of people of being able to participate. So that's just a caution that I want to throw out there, that our participation for some sports may go down and our revenue would go down equally.
Right. And there are, I think there's about 1,000 kids that are right now participating in the activities. You can clarify. I'll, do you step in and fill me out?
Hi, I'm Andy Ewell. I'm the school district's athletic director. Ken, to your point, one of the things that Patricia and I talked about is that for students on free and reduced lunch, they still would have some relief with their athletic participation fees. And any other family that comes forward to us saying that they've got circumstances that might make things difficult, we would continue to work with those families as we have in the past to make sure that finances aren't a barrier to participation. One thing David didn't mention is it's been five or six years since we've raised our fees. At $160, they're, as you saw with the data that was put up there, extremely low compared to everybody else. So I think part of it is, is just the fact of, I don't want to say playing catch-up, but for lack of a better term, we haven't annually increased them a little bit here or there. So it's, it's something that we're going to do and then, you know, we'll, we'll look at the data a year from now and see if there's, if there's been any negative, you know, consequences from it. and see if there's, if there's been any negative, you know, consequences from it.
And I would say, I would say one of the things too, close, you know, whether we're talking the lunches or whether we're talking the athletic fees, you know, I, I was with the Hockey Association for a long time as the treasurer there too, and so you're, you know, if you're, it's probably a lot easier to move it up five bucks a year for these fees than it is to, you know, jump it up thirty-five dollars having not touched them for five, six, seven years. So, it's something too that, that, you know, that should be looked at, and maybe the same with the lunches, that those are moving up a nickel a year or something like that, to try and ensure that we're, we're capturing some of those costs. But I think one of the other concerns that Patricia has expressed is that we can't be subsidizing, using federal subsidies for some of those lunches, and so we've got to have the, the cost reflective of, you know, so we're not having issues with the subsidy from the feds.
Just to get a sense of urgency here.
Yeah.
If nothing, nothing changed at all, how long until we like, we completely got rid of the fund balance?
If you were, if, if the million seven is correct, right, that's being projected right now for year end nineteen here. So even say it's a million and a half, because the math's a little easier in my mind without a ten key up here. You'd, you'd run down to your, let's say, four million dollar floor that the board had established in three to four years? Yeah, two to three.
And it really depends on what other assumptions come true. The, the other assumptions that come into play. So, if we, you know, if we end up settling the contracts at a higher level than the two percent, then that would impact how quickly we fall off the cliff, as would if special education revenue doesn't come in as expected. It's a very complex formula, and generally what they do is they say, okay, what was your, what, what was your expense? And now, we're going to give you seventy-one cents on the dollar. And the next year, they'll say, we're going to give you sixty-three cents, and you find out after the fact what they're giving you. So it's, it's difficult to forecast accurately, but definitely directionally, Dave is absolutely on point, and we're going at an increasing rate now.
Okay, I have one more question about, this is more, again, on the food area. So every year, we, we provide meals to anyone who walks through the line and they're given foods, right? And every year, we end up the year with about eighty thousand dollars of wash, something that we have to pay out because we can't collect from those that consume that meal. Do you have any thoughts, or Patricia, do you have any thoughts on how we can recover that as opposed to, and, and many of them are free and reduced, and they just don't want to apply for the free and reduced.
Right.
But is there a way that we can get some of that funding?
Well, I had heard, I had heard one recommendation by a friend of mine who said, what if you had people, you got Target to sponsor, some gift cards, and if you fill out a free and reduce thing, you get a five dollar free gift card or something. So those who aren't being captured that way, maybe if they had free money at Target, and I'm not saying five dollars is the right amount, but if you found somebody to sponsor it, maybe that would get them interested enough to step up to fill out the paperwork. That would be helpful on a number of levels, whether it's Andy's information, or Andy's money that he's bringing in and allowing kids to participate, or whether it's for the school lunch balance. So that was just one idea from a friend of mine.
I would just add that this is a problem across the state, and there's a mandate that we not shame children. It's the right thing to do, to be sure that children feed, and then it's an adult-to-adult conversation from there. And we aren't, and most districts aren't turning these kinds of debts over to collection agencies, but there's a couple of proactive things that we're, we're doing. The first is we're going to bring our free and reduced application online by this fall for the first time. So that should make it a lot easier for families to, to apply and get meal benefits, so they aren't stuck in that position of, of having to pay and not being able to pay. So that, we hope, will make a difference. And then just being more aggressive about our collections and more purposeful, working with the sites about our collections from families. So adults are having conversations with adults. And always, we would look for ways to have donations from the community towards that debt. Ultimately, that's a debt that is a debt of the general fund. So when we end up writing off that unpaid debt, it would have to be an expense of the general fund, which we would have to talk about as part of our long-term plan.
Good, thank you. Good answers. I have another, I'll talk to you later about the online thing.
So what is the current amount we get per student, per APU, adjusted pupil unit from the state?
I think it's about seventy-two hundred dollars per APU.
Yep, it's sixty-three twelve.
Or sixty-three, but then, and so I was thinking like a high school kid, you'd take that, that times one point two and get about seventy-three hundred dollars per student. And then if you throw in another roughly twenty-one hundred dollars for the levy that's coming through, that gets you about to ninety-five hundred. Then there's, what, twenty-seven other baskets of funding from transportation and so on. You know, round dollars before factoring in sped, you're probably talking ten, eleven thousand dollars a student that's, that's coming in the various baskets.
Thank you.
So I'm sure I have this right. For the referendum money, do we only get that if they're a resident of the district?
No.
No, it's all of them. It, that was amended in the past. I think a few years ago, it was only St. Louis Park students, and then it was amended to include all students, and now it's been recently amended to include an escalator based on, I believe, the Consumer Price Index. So that's probably going to rise also at roughly the same rate as the, what we're getting for, from the state. Right? But we have, for what it's worth, yeah, Julie's just pointing out there, you know, we have, we are at the statutory cap. We can't, we can't push that up anymore from fifteen hundred to two thousand a kid. We're, we're at the cap, and we've got escalators built in, so there, there's no more going back to the well there.
And I think that's a really important point to make, because we've had parents say to us in listening sessions, we'll just increase our taxes to pay for this, or pay for that, or pay for the other thing. We absolutely cannot. We're the only government body that actually has to ask the taxpayers to tax, and they can say yes or no, and then we're held hostage by the unfunded sped. Right now, our cross-subsidy gap is four point eight million a year and growing, and then the formula. So, you, you said it beautifully. We got twenty-seven different baskets of the money that comes in. All of them have rules attached to them. So you can't just say, well, shove this here to pay for that. It does not work like that. And I must say, I really value the dedication and expertise that the members of the financial advisory committee have given our superintendent and board over the years, because you do help us see the picture in a slightly different way. But we also need our broader community to understand, it, it's not a simple wave the wand and get more money in here, folks. We're, we're getting as much as we possibly can get in.
Well, and, and as an example too, as you've been able to add students, you know, so if you're getting, forget some of the sped money if none of that applies. If you're getting eleven thousand dollars a head and you get twenty-five kids in, you're getting whatever that is, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars roughly in, in revenue. If, if you're bringing on a teacher and you've got a hundred thousand in, in salary and benefits, that class, you know, those incremental children are, are generating an extra hundred and fifty thousand over the, the variable cost of that, of that room to the total. And, but if we do not have more room at the end, right, then, then it is what it is. So, there, there just isn't a lot of room to, to push the enrollment around at this point.
I just was going to add to the comment that Karen made, and this may come up again when we get to the start, school start time conversation, but I've heard some people ask, why didn't you just at levy, or ask us to vote on the referendum to pay more for bus money? And the point is, we can't. That has to come out of a certain pot, and that pot of money is the general fund, and we can't go to the taxpayers and ask for more money to pay for the transportation. So, again, it's.
And I sat in on a number of those conversations and said exactly that.
Thank you for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. You've been, you've been loyal and with us for a long time, and we, I'm grateful every year to see you're still with us, and, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Chair Gore, can I add something? I just want to say that I've never sat through a finance advisory committee presentation at the table while the finance committee presented. This is a really remarkable group of community members who are committed and really understand school finance, and it's a pleasure to work with them. And I want to reiterate and put an advertisement out. We are serious about expanding the number of finance advisory committee members, and we particularly want to expand so that the races of all of our students are represented and the adults that come and, and learn about the finances of the district. And you don't have to be as smart as these folks on finance, because we will teach you that. And so we're going to do a concerted effort of recruiting, but I really hope that we can expand the kind of folks that understand school finance like these folks do.
Good luck, and, and I hope that works, and I hope that our principals can be of some help in that recruiting effort. So next up on the agenda is the Family Engagement Multicultural Liaison Program. I learned how to spell it. I didn't learn how to say it yet. And it's going to be led by, this presentation is going to be led by Frida Bailey, who is our principal on special assignment, and I'll let you introduce the rest of your, your team. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Gore, Superintendent O'Sai, and board members. This evening, my name is Frida Bailey. I'm principal of special assignment, and today I have three wonderful individuals that will help me share some information about the work that's taking place with our families and in our communities. So we'll go ahead and get started with, I want to start with a quote that I was, I noticed by Debbie Silver. And the quote stated that "successful schools not only embrace, but actively solicit the engagement of student families." And when I read that, I thought about the work that's taking place here in St. Louis Park, and then being intentional about how do we make sure that all of our families feel the embarrassment that we're talking about. One of the things that we've tried to do in working with liaison is looking at our mission. In the past, we've been kind of working in that silo component. This year, we've been really intentional about having our liaisons collaborate with each other. Our Spanish liaison, our Somali liaison, and our American Indian liaison. So once a month, we get together and we talk about certain issues. And we're letting that drive us through our mission statement, which is making sure that we're, because we are a caring and diverse community, we want to make sure that all of our students and families are given the opportunities that others are given in our district. And the key component there is providing a safe and nurturing environment and energizing and enhancing the spirit. And in order to do that, that means that we have to build those relationships with different families. So with that, we connect that to our core values, and that means that looking at everyone has equal and intrinsic worth. We're enhancing that healthy development, high expectations, having that conversation with families about what is it that St. Louis Park is doing? And then what is it that we can get and hear from them, because we know that families are the first teachers with the students that walk through our doors. And then also understanding that when we're talking about lifelong learning, what does that look like for each individual family? And how do we support that when we're doing our work? Through Title I, which, just listening about the money, I'm thinking, okay, that's, because Title I is kind of that grant-funded piece. And with each component, there is a parent engagement component to that. And one of the things that the liaison are helping with is how do we continuously embrace that through various multiple pathways through the grants that are operated? And through Title I, there's a parent and family engagement regulation that we have to make sure that each family that, when a student is targeted and needing assistance, how do we ensure that the families understand the systems in order to navigate? And how do we, once again, build that parent engagement stakeholder component that is needed in each of the schools? And then share the student's success, and then how do we also support the students and families when we're looking at the student engagement? Through our American Indian Education Aid, which is another grant, this program addresses five specific goals that we have to look at each and every time. And with those goals, it's talking about the reading for success in schools, third grade literacy level, third grade level literacy, racial and economic achievement gaps, college and career readiness, and graduation. So those five components, even though it's under our American Ed Grant, it's also something that we look at throughout the system with all of our families throughout the district. One of the things that the liaison will do, liaisons will do is kind of talk about how is it that they are supporting the families through multiple ways throughout the district, high school, middle school, early childhood, elementary. And then because of their role is overlapping, they'll just kind of share some components, but when they're sharing that, it's meaning all of what they do. And then at the end, we'll have our American Indian liaison kind of share some of the pieces that are critical to what the, the work that we're doing as well. And with that, our parent and family engagement, we know that it's an ongoing process. This is not that, let's knock on your door and say, hi, we're so glad you're here, and we're welcoming you. But we have to make sure that we're hearing them, and we're taking action to what is being asked, and then collaborate once again on what is, what else can we do as a system to support them? So that collaboration can look and feel different for, once again, each different family, culture, and making sure that we keep an awareness in that. And that's going to help us look at the goal of educating the whole child with the support of the family in place. One of the things that I wanted to share was how is it that our liaisons are supporting the families? We have various ways that we support them, through language, and that's through our Spanish liaison, which we have identified, the numbers kind of shift every now and then, because what we're noticing is that even though some families may state that they speak Spanish in the home, we have some who speak Spanish or speak other languages and don't put that information on their form when they're enrolling. But our liaisons are able to capture those families through community, through community and collaboration with other families that may say, I know a family who may need support, even though on their home language survey, they may have placed English on there. So those numbers are just kind of a rough number based upon what we have in our system. With our Somali system, our numbers, it shifts because, and I was talking to Tarabi about this, because I'm like, I'm not really sure, what is this language? So there are other languages that can fall under the category, like Swahili and Oremo, and there's some other languages, even though Somali is part of a larger group of our families. And then we have the ethnicity of our American Indians, and that's kind of changing a little bit based upon, there's a five oh six identification, what tribe, so we're having to look at some of the federal components of identification for a lot of our students. So with our strategy, once again, we're trying to create that alignment, being intentional about how do we support St. Louis Park, and make sure that we're supporting our families and make sure that they are able to navigate our system. So we're looking at our community collaboration. And with that collaboration, we're once again looking at the racial diversity communities, being authentic about that, making sure that we're putting systems in place, and once again, that's an ongoing process, because we may feel that we're putting something in place, but the families are not getting that information for whatever reason. So we have to examine that and then go back and try to bring on more support in a different way. And then building on that collective ownership, giving parents the opportunities to share, and then feel that they are part of the system, and we're not sharing, we're not giving, we're not forcing, but once again, collaborating with them. And this is in accordance with our core values that was mentioned earlier. So I'll have Harmon Rudin kind of share some information about next steps.
Good afternoon. Believe me, it's an honor to be in front of all of you. I've been working for St. Louis Park since nineteen ninety-nine. I consider this my second home. I see the needs all the time of all the families and the children that live in this community whose first language is Spanish. And I try to do the best I can through the knowledge that I have and the communication that I have with them from day to day to better approach their needs. I think one of the parts that I love about my job is working with the children. I have the opportunity not only to work with the Spanish-speaking children, but with all of them, because I share my culture, and we make connections. And the relationship, as we know, is the most important part for the families and the children. Once again, the kids trust. I know they will help me to reach out to adults, and they will come to the meetings that we need to share a lot of information. that we need to share a lot of information. Early childhood education is the door for many of the families who's the first experience with an American school system. I think our mission is to make them feel welcome, to help them, because it could be overwhelming to come to a different school system where they're used to. And learning, it's part of what we are at school. And teaching, it's the most important part for these families. They want to learn and be able to navigate the system the best they can for their children, even though English is not their first language. Another part of my job too is to be able to help the families to translate documents that they come from time to time to them. Communication is key, whether it's reading, or it's in phone blasts, or phone calls, or text messages. We all do that to better serve our families and connect with them. And as you say, that they stay in the district because they love these schools, they want to stay. And because they feel they have a lot of incredible things that the city offers for them, they want to stay. A lot of the work that I do with the kids move from preschool all the way to high school. I try to get engaged with them in, through culture, through language, through music, anything that moves these children to better adapt to the changes they're going through, to identify themselves like people that have different cultures but live in one country. Families are key for our students to be successful. We have all kind of activities in the district, giving the parents the opportunity to learn more and for us to learn from them, painfully. We have activities that include culture and food because we know that families will get together and share more and trust these schools if they are welcome and invited like they are their own homes. Most of our work is just communication. We want the families to feel comfortable. We want the families to be able to tell us what they need. And I think through all the work we do in the district, we get that incredible opportunity to do so. Now I'm going to leave the opportunity to Tarabi to keep talking about what we do.
Good evening. My name is Tarabi Jama. I'm a multicultural liaison for the Somali communities, and also I represent, I also help other communities, families from Ethiopia, families from Kenya, and families from Djibouti or Eritrean, who most of the time speaks either Somali, or maybe speaks Arabic or some Swahili. As you see in the middle school, as Carmen said, one of our goal, or one of my activities was to, was to attend the middle school programs, including practice school conferences, just to meet the parent and explain why they are, why they come to the school, and what activities they need about it. If you look at the two tickets that we, we help parents understand, is the two tests, one is MCA test and one is the MOC test. And try to explain what each test emphasizes and what each test is all about, and how the fact finding about the math, language learning, and literature, and scientists can, can, can help their children to be pleased. So there are sometimes, compared to, all I can say, most of the parents who are from East Africa, they somehow, their education background is different than what we do here, and how we do the testing. And I try my best to explain the difference. And most of the time, they might not even familiar with the MCA or MOC test, not alone, they understand what each test is all about. So part of, not only me, but part of my other colleagues' responsibilities to explain those tests to the parents in their language and their way that they can understand. For the middle school, we, I attend, and Carmen and Shanita and I attend sixth grade and eighth grade open house school, just to share with the information session. And also, we interpret for that if it's necessary. We also attend fall and spring school conferences. Again, for those conferences, we meet the parent, we meet with the teachers, we do the, interpret for the parent, try to understand what the teachers are saying about their children, and what improvement they need in terms of the reading, and writing, and math, and science, and every subject that they are taken. So that's part of it. If there is things that we need to share with the parent, whether this academic learning or behavior skills, if there is something that students are lacking, then we share with them. We also assist families to, to fill out home and family interviews to learn more about their children. And that's basically related with the, with the special education program, to share with the parent. We also help the parents understand BAOE school and the school, the schoolology functionality. Some parents, they might not have computers at home, others, they might not are technical savvy, or may not be, or they might have difficulty to navigate within the, within the computer or within the program. So sometimes we set up an appointment in our offices, or we, or meet with them and show them how the, how they can look at, or how they can interpret the BAOE school, and where they need to look at in terms of the grade that students, that the children got in terms of if they become late, or if they don't show up to class, or whatever that tells for the BAOE school. So sometimes we might even help them download the apps so they can have their laptop, have a surf phone if they don't have a computer at home. So there is some functionality in that. Oops. That's your part.
Engaging families, we work with collaboration with Centro Tito and Guzman. This is a great organization that comes and helps families to learn how to understand better their teenagers. There's a lot of challenges that they go through, you know, and parents need to relearn strategies to better understand how life is for, in this country for a teenager than the challenge they have from, from day to day. This organization comes and work with the families, and we have the opportunity to do this at the middle school. And all that they learn is in their first language, Spanish. If you see this picture with our parents that went through seven meetings, once every month, and they graduated from this academy for parents. So they're interested in learning to be better prepared to the challenges that they get through every day in their homes. A lot of the, that's, I'm sorry, we're just looking back and forth.
Just, just again, for the high school, there's some activities that we do. Carmen, Shanita and I, we attend school counselor appointments for parents, just to talk to parents and find out what the teachers are saying for, for the children. We listen to students for the student concern and academic issues, whether it's emotional or social problems, if there is someone. We also help students process their problems. We might set some goals with the, with the school counselors. And if there is, if they missing some assignments, they might have some space or they can retain whatever assignment they're missing. If they want to do the, could do the chapter that they failed, they may, they may get some flexibility on that. But again, all that comes with talking to parents, kids, teachers, and then school counselors. We may, if there is a conflict between students and teachers, sometimes they might, you might get some students who say, I don't want to go back to that class, or they may have some issue with the teacher. So we have to find out what, what's about it and talk to parents. And then we try to improve parent-teacher relationship, which means taking any information that we need, that we can take from teachers, school counselors, to the parents, and then take their message back to, back to the school. And for the district, again, we try to convey district message, or district vision, mission, and goals, and values to the parents, and explain the school and the, or the district expectation. From the parent's side, not only what the parent wants to do at this school, but also what their roles and responsibilities for their children, when they are at home, in terms of coming on time, in terms of their behavior, in terms of the doing homework, in terms of building relationship with teachers and with other schools, with other students. So we're trying to make two-way conversation, from one is from the school to parent, and the parent back to the, back to the teachers, and back to the district. And we try to answer their questions, their concerns, if we know at the time. Otherwise, we have to come back and, and get more information. We communicate with parents on behalf of the school. As I said, if there is attendance, if there, if there is a homework that's supposed to, especially for the middle schools. For the high school, there might be some sort of responsible for what they're doing. For the, for the middle school, they might forget that. And then we conduct a parent meeting, I think Carmen talked about the, the parent meeting that we, that we held monthly at the Peter Harbor School, some other parent meetings. And, and, and those meetings, we discuss what are the issues that they, that they have toward the school. We listen to their concerns, and as I said again, if we have some, if we have answers, we share with them. Otherwise, we come back some other time and share with them. So that's what I leave with that.
There are great challenges for Spanish-speaking families. They come, our system in our country is so different. When we talk to college, it's a different world. Parents have to learn, know their children come to the high school and they get all the information they need. But that's not what happened with the parents, and that's why we have different meetings to be able to bring organizations that will speak in Spanish to the families and help them to clarify their options, and how better they can support their children economically. I work with the Latino Student Association here at the high school. We gather with around between 50 to 45 students every time we meet. We talk about the challenges that they have in school, and how can we, as a community, can help each other to better manage our day-to-day. I'm very happy to be part of this group because the kids come and they speak Spanish. And that's very difficult for children at this age because they're trying to define where they belong or who they are. My goal is for the children to know that they have many options, and they can have two worlds and be able to navigate both with success. Graduation is a big part of what we talk every day, to tell the children, yes, they belong in this school, and they will be able to accomplish what they want if they have Our families are in great need of many things. One of the things is food, community education, and medical services. Many of our families moved to this neighborhood because they feel safe, there are incredible schools. However, it's hard to afford a place to live here. Rents are really expensive for our families, and they feel that sometimes they have to pay their rents, and they might not be able to afford to completely feed their children. So we have this incredible opportunity to have step with help. Every school has a different program to, to help the children when they need food. Community education helps a lot of the children when they have activities. My goal is that every kid could go to a different activity that they can enjoy. A lot of families don't know how to log and find information about that, and this is where I come, and I share with them the information that I have. Medical and clinical services are a key part of our district. I don't know what will happen if we didn't have the Centra Clinic. Kids can walk over there from the high school, or families can go with their children, with the most basic things, that vaccination. Everybody has the opportunity to have that service, and when families need it, I give them the information they need. You see, our work is a lot of communication. These parents will learn, and will be able to help their children with our help, and that will bring us to feel better because we're doing something for our community. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Shanita Young. I am the Multicultural Liaison, working with Native American families. The American Indian Education Aid, American Indian, is administered by the Minnesota Department of Education and provides per pupil funding to eligible school districts, charter schools, and Bureau of Indian Education, tribal contract schools, reaching American Indian students statewide. The purpose of this program is to increase academic achievement, decrease the dropout rate, and to improve the school climate of American Indians in a culturally appropriate So as Frida was telling you about the 506 form, so this was just something new to our district that was, I went through training last year, at the end of last year. And so I find it kind of irritated that the Native Americans are the only ethnicity that has to prove who they are, especially when we have been through so much, and I am encountering families who I might cry. Their parent was adopted, and they know that they're native, and so they can't, they don't have like the enroll, they're not enrolled. And with this 506 form, it's like you have to prove that you're native. the purpose of the program is to increase academic achievement. And so in doing this, this year, I have created individual plans for student success in collaboration with the students, the families, the liaisons, the school staff, and, my contacts are, the school staff, and going, getting the students, there's like some students that were like not in school, and they were truant, and so just helping them come up with a plan to be able to reach that and to be successful. Checking in with the students individually and in groups so that they can support each And then there's also some, some affinity groups that I, that I do once a month at each school. And that's where all of the Native American students from every grade level in that school come together so that they can see each other. I came into the district at the end of the 16, 17 school year, so I haven't been here that long. And at that time, there were a lot of Native American students who didn't know that there were other Native American students in their school. And so by bringing them together, it has helped them like have some pride and stuff like that. And so also, out of the affinity groups, I did And so also out of the affinity groups, I did focus groups at every school. And I have done focus groups at every school, ensuring that we honor what the students want. And so just in the focus groups, I'm asking them, what do they want to get out of the groups that we have? And what type of support do they want? And through the focus groups, there was a student-initiated peer support study group that's followed up with family, myself, teachers, and staff members supporting them to attain their highest level of achievement, which is in the strategic plan. And the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Minnesota Statute, Section 124D, 78, Point 78 requires that all Minnesota districts, Minnesota districts and tribal schools with 10 or more American Indian students have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. These committees serve in an advisory role to their school districts and help ensure that American Indian students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities. They are critical to the achievement and success of American Indian students statewide. Parents, family, and community members are on this committee, and they are very serious about ensuring our students are having these opportunities. So the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution, we meet, the committee meets about two or three times per year. The first meeting is to go over how things went from the last year and what we plan to do for this year. The second meeting is to go over the American Indian Program Plan and to have a vote of concurrence. And so that's what the resolution is. And family engagement and support, working with families and communities, bridging the gap between school, home, and the community. And in doing home visits that build a stronger connection through liaison to the school and the community. Thank you.
So just kind of summing everything up, basically, a lot of people will say, we have multicultural liaisons. Who are they? What do they do? Why are they just visiting certain schools or maybe, maybe not? I don't see here whatever the case may be. What we've tried to do is make sure that all of the families are aware of that, and that's through multiple modalities. So basically, our liaison's role is basically sort of what you've heard. And that's helping our families understand our system. Because we know the system that we have for a lot of the families, our most marginalized, have difficulty understanding what the systems are about. And so our liaisons have to kind of sit and go through it kind of meticulously, how to unpack and understand what the system is that we have in our school system. Not only do, once they mention that, having the one-on-one conversations, but we're also looking at other ways to communicate. I know there is thought exchange, one of the things that we've talked about, looking at apps, various ways to make sure that the parents are being notified when there are certain issues based upon weather or bus schedules. So looking at all of those other pieces that can impact a family, how do our families who speak a different language also hear that information? And then once again, understanding that we have conferences, and sometimes conferences can impact whether or not a family can come. And a lot of the schools have been really cognizant of that and having those flex schedules for some of our families because they know that we have one liaison or two. And then if you have multiple families meeting at different times, at different schools, sometimes we have elementary schools and middle schools having conferences. So how do you support the families that need that support? So collaboration is key, not only with our families, but through the schools and our system as well. So in closing, just wanted to share this picture. I just thought this was something that was really beautiful that Carmen was able to show. And this is two friends with their abuelo. And this is just honoring our elders and understanding that they too have a story that can share with the family. So families' engagement is not only us, but us listening to them. Any questions?
I have a few. So on the numbers, Joe asked this question to me, and I thought I answered it correctly, but I don't think I did. You had the numbers on the student families or families. Is that the number of students in our school? That one.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I have the magic touch, okay. So the number that you see here is basically language. So in the front, you see where it says language and Spanish. So when we look in our system, the families that put down in their home, that fill out home language surveys and say that Spanish was one of the languages, that's the number that pops up. And then for ethnicity, that's the number that comes up. Once again, filling out the home language survey, you have to state ethnicity. And sometimes we have that multiracial component in there as well. But just looking at it from that one piece, this is the one that we, as far as American Indian. Right. Even though, there's a caveat, even though we have some families that say English, but they also speak Spanish. So it could be higher than this number based upon what we saw in the system.
And for the liaisons, just assuming that that's the total number, what percentage of those families do you guys kind of touch base with on an annual basis? Not a real number, just a number you think.
Around 178 families of, you know, in the district. We're talking from, all the way from preschool to high school. And like I said, you know, there are more families and there are, you know, when they, families describe their background, it's more, but sometimes they think they're, like Frida say, they are bilingual. Or, you know, it's second or third generation of Hispanic families in this country. So they only speak English even though their background is Hispanic.
So you touch base with about 178 families?
Regularly, yes, because we have conferences, we have special ed meetings, we have family engagement. So in that, and then we have all kind of like first day of school or come and meet your teacher. So all the families come in different situations. Some might not need an interpreter, but they will ask me to be in meetings with them, just to see, just to be with them.
Sure, for the support. And I think that's a great, great asset that you guys bring to the families. That when I was in PTO in Aquila, that was a major issue of, you know, some people come and have no idea what the teacher's saying, and it does no good. So now that you guys are with them and speaking and interpreting, and even if they understand the English, the language, sometimes it's getting mixed up in some of the body language. So anyway, I think it's a great asset that you guys bring. And then I have one more question. So from what Patricia just mentioned a little bit ago, you guys have your work a cut ahead of you in that we're going to be doing the free and reduced electronically, of which is going to be a challenge that I hope that you guys can overcome for all of our people.
I think it could be done. We just have to pay more attention to do it in different languages. It's now done in English, but it needs to be done, and it has to be in a way that we had to advertise.
I'm sure since this presentation that took place and since Patricia's working on some stuff, that we could probably get together and probably pretty proactive on getting that done. So that when that $80,000, we kind of touch on some of that too. So anyway, it was just my thoughts.
No, thank you.
Love to see you guys working with some of that stuff.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for being here again this year, and this is fabulous. I was able to attend a session at the Minnesota School Board Association Conference earlier this year with two members of the American Indian Education Support Team at NDE. And they were, they shared, I just wanted to share with you that they shared your frustration with the 506 form. I'm thankful for you for bringing it up, and I hope that you feel supported in supporting our native students, no matter what it says on their form, and identifying and supporting them. So thank you. And I hope you guys can get out of here soon. Your son is, your son is waiting. He's been very patient, so thank him for us, for waiting and for your patience. And thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. That was a very helpful, I thought, presentation to understand the depth and breadth of all the good work that you're doing on behalf of our students. And I want to add a thank you to Carmen, who, Carmen, just wave your hands. Yeah, who has also served on the School Start Committee and did a lot of great work for us there, offering her insights. So thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to try to move this along as quickly as we can because I just feel bad that the School Start Time discussion is later. But it is where it is on the agenda. So Tom, you're going to talk about the radon test report.
Yes, thank you. That's School Board Nancy Gores, Superintendent Osai, and School Board members. Every five years, each school district has to do radon testing. Last time we did ours was in 2013, 2014, and it was random testing. This time, we did full testing, which was 429 air-checked radon samplings. And I please tell you that out of the 429, we had just three that were slightly higher. But the three that were slightly higher, when we did, when we checked the day test, they were, they met all regulatory requirements. So what we found out was that the three that were higher, areas that were higher is because at night, at six o'clock at night, we turned down the system, like everybody does in all districts. And then at five o'clock in the morning, we turn the system back on. So I just want, oops, I just wanted to kind of share with you that this district is doing great in the radon testing. We are, we submitted this to the Minnesota Department of Education and Department of Health, and also to the EPA stating what we have done and some of the mitigations on the three areas that were slightly higher. We're just going to run the system a little bit longer, and we're going to accomplish that, just very simple. So we're very happy about our outcome that we have. Any questions?
Is that typical to have that sort of reading? And just to do the remedy that you're suggesting, to start it a little bit earlier in the morning?
Yeah, it is. When we talk to other districts and Patricia, coming from Osseo, which is a bigger district than here, that's the same thing they've done. They just ran the system a little longer. And the good thing about it again is there was no detection during daytime when kids were there. It was only after hours when we turned the system off. So yeah, that's about what we do, and that's what most districts do. Thank you.
Next up, we have the budget assumptions. Probably already heard some of those, so we'll just get a quick review.
Thank you, Chair Gores, Superintendent Osai, members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is to just be clear with the board about the assumptions that we're going to be building into the budget as we start to prepare the final numbers that will come to the board in June. Most of this, well, all of this has been vetted with the Finance Advisory Committee, and most of this you've heard already. Included in this memo are the estimated enrollment assumptions. And to reiterate, those are based on a three-year cohort survival model. And the waiting for the adjusted pupil units are just based on the numbers built in state statute. We don't expect those to change. We're going to be staffing for classroom teachers based upon the guidelines, as you see here. And then based on that slight decline in enrollment that we're expecting to experience next year. And as the Finance Committee members told you, we are making a recommendation for some adjustments to district fees. I do just want to point out one slight change that we are making to make sure that the board is aware that we are moving facility rental fees out of the General Fund and into the Community Education Fund, where they are most generally reported in school districts. The costs associated with renting the facilities, including the staffing associated with that, is paid for from community education generally. Those are, the revenues also accrue to community education. So we're just making that recommendation for change in St. Louis Park. We are including a 2% increase in the funding formula. It's currently $6,312. And we will see what comes out of the legislative session. We will know in a little more than a month. And then again, we will of course maintain the fund balance minimum above the 6% School Board policy. So those are the assumptions that we will be building into the budget as we move toward the fiscal year 2020 budget we'll bring to you in June.
Thanks, Patricia. And just looking at that, the classroom teacher staffing, those are the targeted classroom sizes for each grade K through five, right? And then we see the others that they've done in one moment.
That's right, some classrooms will be above, some will be maybe below. Those are just targets that we try to staff toward.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And then we're going to move on to the student fees, and that, you don't have to go very far.
No, and again, the Finance Committee did a fine job of explaining to you. What we did was take a look at both lunch prices and then activity fees, some of the districts that we compare ourselves with in both of those areas. And we are trying to bring our numbers up to the average. And as you stated in your discussion, this keeps us apace of the districts that we compare ourselves with. The quality and the services that we provide are equal or better than those districts, and we should be pricing ourselves in accordance so that we don't have to do a giant fee increase at some future date. And this memo at the bottom includes that note that Andy reiterated that our athletic fees for students whose families qualify for free will be at $25, and reduced-priced families, we will charge one-half of the rates here. And that's very similar to what our neighboring districts do.
Thank you, I very much appreciate seeing what our neighboring districts are doing. It helps understand the context and our need. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Student Transportation Service Agreement.
I'm going to have our friend, Thomas Berlin, who is, I think of him as our Transportation Director, but he works for K-12 Transportation, the consultant that helps service our transportation contracts. And Thomas actually went through the proposal, went through the negotiation process with Mainline Transportation and brought forward this recommendation for you tonight. Did all of the hard work behind the scenes, and is, he and their team are experts in this area. And what we're recommending is a renewal for one more year with Mainline, which is, we refer to them as MTI, for one more year at the rate you see here. And we are very competitive in this, in our hourly, in our route rates for special education transportation, as you can see in the memo that we have in front of you. So we recommend that we approve this contract, renew it for one more year. And then we have one additional year on our regular education routes, our normal to-and-from routes with Park Adam Transportation that has one more year remaining. And what we are planning to do then is this fall, market both special education and regular education, get them on the same pattern after that. So we would recommend that you approve these rates. And if you have some detailed questions, Thomas is here, can answer those as well.
Great work, Tom, thank you. No questions this time. All right, next up is the Strategic Plan Report, Strategy Number Four, Start Times.
Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board. I'm Sarah Thompson, Director of Communications for the school district. We're here tonight to give you some additional information about school start and end times. We were just here recently giving you the recommendation from the project team. And so tonight, I'm joined by the superintendent, as well as Thomas Berlin, who we just heard from, to provide some additional information for you. Just a quick review, we have been on this topic since October, when we first started recruiting team members. And it's been a long process with a lot of input and a lot of involvement. And so just wanted to give you a couple reminders of where we're at and what we're doing here tonight. In your packet, and for those watching at home. and what we're doing here tonight. In your packet, and for those watching at home, this will be on the website tomorrow morning, is a 15-page document of questions that you had. Details, intricacies, wonderings, what-if questions, and how does that work? So, we went into some great detail. And that's available for you tonight, board members. And for those watching at home, we'll have that on the website tomorrow morning, if you really want to dig deep into some questions that the board had. We also did some feedback in March. And we also have a recommendation tonight for the status quo option, as well as some more details for you about the triangle and diamond, or triangle and square, sorry, options that were recommended by the project team. So, I wanted to just hit quickly on the frequently asked questions. Inevitably, there's a few people out there who don't want to read 15 more pages of information. And so, I wanted to just hit on a few things that came up, some ideas that were out there. Some of them have been stated before, and some of them are new ideas. And so, we're still looking at things like, can we do anything to get all of our schools to start at 8:00 a.m.? That's kind of a magic time that's been a common thread throughout the process. And so, we're still looking at that. What would status quo look like? So, the project team did not recommend a status quo option. The board asked for one. And so, we'll be providing you some info on that tonight. What are some impacts? We have many teachers who are also coaches. What does that look like as we look at a change? The academic bus at the middle school, that's been a popular question, as well as childcare. What can we do differently with childcare? How can we modify childcare? So that as we're changing start times, if the board chooses to do so, we can accommodate families and also do our best to keep our kids safe and in an enriching environment as well. So, these are just some high points of what's in that 15 pages. Also, wanted to give you just a really quick summary of the feedback. Again, you've got another probably 20 or 30 pages of feedback that will go, that goes to the board tonight, and will also be available online tomorrow. In, in the month of March, since our presentation, we had another thought exchange where we hosted conversation online. We had 123 participants, 161 thoughts, and we had a very large number of ratings. People visited often and participated in rating those thoughts 4,170 times. So, lots of participation in this new engagement tool. We also hosted a public meeting right here in C-350 at the high school, where we had 25 attendees. We planned to offer it on Facebook Live, but that happened to be the same day where Facebook crashed worldwide. So, we were victim of that as well. School Board hosted a listening session, and I believe as soon as we end this presentation, Vice Chair Tomback is going to give you a recap of that. And then, we also sought impact, input and feedback during our March 19th kindergarten registration. So, lots of new families who haven't been part of this conversation necessarily through our regular communication channels. We spent some time giving them an opportunity to provide feedback as well. Actually, I'm going to go back one more time. Summary, very quickly. Certainly, there's been a lot of input and a lot of feedback. But, wanted to just, again, kind of bring forward the top three concerns and the top three messages for you of support that are coming through. And I don't think anybody will be surprised by anything on this list. So, concerns that continue to come forward, again, in March, are childcare, athletics, bus stop safety. And on the side of support, what we're continuing to hear is follow the academic research, be mindful of the mental and physical health for students, and lean into the personal experience of families who have walked the walk of all three schools or are currently walking the walk, and their personal experiences. So, those are the summaries of what we've been hearing and heard yet again in March. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Thomas. He's going to walk you through the options recommendations one more time and provide just one more run through the details.
Hi, good evening. Hum, so looking, sorry. Looking at the triangle option was one of the options that the committee came up with. Moving to a, or keeping a three-tiered system, but moving all the elementaries to the first tier, having all four running together for the start time of 7:45 and then at 2:15. PSI would have direct runs in this case, not running with, with other schools. After that, we'd have a second tier of the high school, starting at 8:25 and ending at 3:15, which is relatively similar to the times now. And then, moving the middle school to the third tier, starting at 9:10 to 3:52. And that was about a $60,000 increase over the current, current costs. Another option that was decided on was a two-tiered system. Similar to the previous one, all four elementaries would be on the first tier together, starting a little bit later at 7:55 and ending at 2:25. Park Spanish again would be not pairing with the other schools. They'd have independent runs. And then, the second tier would be all the, or the middle school and the high school together. Students would ride together. Buses would drop off in the morning at the most efficient school first, and then go to the second. In the afternoon, buses, because of the shorter day at the middle school, would start at the middle school, go to the high school for students, and then bus out from there. And that was about an increase of about $500,000. So, then the next, did you want to go there?
Go ahead. Don't worry, I may need you to come up here. Yeah, all right. Chair Goris, members of the board, as a part of the board's request of information regarding different start time options, and in order to do your due diligence, you made a request of, of me to provide status quo options. As you know, our transportation consultant provided us three different status quo options, two of which were at no cost increase, and one of which did require a cost increase of about $150,000. The recommendation that the district administration will be making to you for a status quo option would be the option in front of you that would be a three-tiered option. Middle school would remain with its current start time. The high school would keep its current start times. Park Spanish immersion, which would in, within this particular option, have its own, have its own direct routes, would start at 8:20 to 2:50. And what you'll notice the difference here is that on the third tier would still be our, our IB schools, Aquila, Peter Hobart and Susan Lindgren, but those start times would be about five minutes later respectively, at 9:30 and 9:35. The, the other option that was at no cost required Park Spanish immersion students to do a physical transfer of buses at the high school. And as a district administration, we felt that that would create too many safety implications or challenges for students. Therefore, are bringing this recommendation forward. I do want to say though, that there is an option that would cost an additional $150,000, if I'm not mistaken, that would allow us to keep our third tier start times the same. So, we would still have direct routes to PSI, and our, our third tier start times would not have to be backed up five minutes respectively at this site.
And Aston, just to be clear, this is just a third option on the table. This is not the option that you're recommending we pick at this point in time.
Yes, Chair Goris. So, this is, this is in response to requests from the School Board, wanting to make sure that you're completely informed and have all of the information so that you make an informed decision. So, I would say it's not even a recommendation, as the start project team did not make this recommendation, but it's, it's being responsive to your request for information. And, and I won't go through this in detail, as I know you all have been intimately, oh, I'm sorry.
One quick thing, it's 15 minutes later.
Oh, 15 minutes. I'm sorry. Did I say five minutes?
Yeah, yeah. So, I just want to make sure everyone heard that, 9:30, 9:35, or 15 minutes later than their current start time.
Thank you for that. I've, as you all have been here pretty long tonight, minutes are blurring together. So, thank you for that clarification. And the, the last piece is just about the, the timeline. And you all are very familiar with where we've been and have a, a great detail and understanding of where we're going. As Sarah mentioned, the past several months have been full of engagement, conversation, feedback and interaction around this topic. And we are continually seeking feedback and, and public input and are requesting that on April 8th, that the, the School Board provide us some direction regarding the recommendations that we made about start times. And at this time, I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Okay. I think that, Thomas, you may be the person to answer these kind of series of questions that I have. The vast majority of feedback that I have received has said every school should start after eight o'clock, and you need to find a way to make this happen. And so, forgive me if I sound like I'm going to be an attorney cross-examining you here for a couple of minutes. I promise there's a point. How long have you been doing this? Being a transportation consultant for education systems?
I've worked in transportation for about 15 years.
15 years. And how long have you been working on St. Louis Park's project to create some bus routes?
I joined that for the last three months.
Okay. So, for three months, you have been trying to find a way, from what I understand, to see if all kids could start school after 8:00 a.m.? Because I think we all agree that that was the ideal situation in theory.
Yeah. That, that would be very costly, I guess, would be what we determined.
Right. I was going to get there in just a second. Right. I'm just saying that you have tried.
Oh, yes, yes.
From multiple angles and multiple routes, having us, having asked you a gajillion questions for the last few months, the project time as well, the project team as well. And it is cost prohibitive, if not actually impossible, given limitations from the bus company and other things?
That's correct. Yeah, very much so.
Okay. I just needed to get that out there. Thank you very much. One of the specific questions that I have had come to me from a couple of different people is the idea that we do a two-tiered system, like proposed an option square, but that we keep tier one as the middle school and high school, and tier two as the elementary school. And so, my understanding, well, why don't you under, explain if that would be a feasible option at around 1.4 million or not? I think I know why, but you tell me.
It would be similar. There would probably be, we would have to have more time between the schools. Having elementaries earlier, they have a shorter day, obviously, so we have more time in the afternoon. So, now, we're building those times based off of tightening the morning as much as possible. The middle school and high school runs are going to be longer than the elementary, so we'd have a longer operational day. Moving to that, it'd probably be more expensive at that rate.
Right. I think that my understanding of it is that because the elementarys have a shorter school day than the high school and middle school, that we could not, they would basically all be getting out about the same time.
Right, yeah.
In the afternoons. And so, we couldn't, again, that would basically be creating a one-tier option for the routes home.
Correct.
Correct. Right. Okay. I think those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Tom, I just want to keep you there, because this is a related question on this topic. Because I had asked, as I recall, two weeks ago, under the, I think you said under the triangle option, we were trying to have all elementary students not have to get on a bus before seven o'clock. And that was possible with, with the exception of PSI, because some students have to go all the way across town now with the move to Cedar Manor, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, you took a look at what it would cost to keep all students starting a bus at seven or later. Am I right that the cost to do that was another $240,000?
That's right, yeah. We would have to add, sorry, yeah, we would have to add about five vehicles to have all the PSI kids picked up at seven or later. So, that'd be about $240,000.
That's quite a, that's quite a swing from a, from where we are at 15 minutes before seven pickup.
It is, yeah.
And one point that I want to get into the space that we, we still need to grapple with and consider. We, we heard from a number of people at the listening session, just increase our taxes and give us what we want. Well, school finance doesn't work like that. And we're going to have to have a robust discussion about what is it that we want to cut in order to pay for the other thing that we want. And that's something that we need to do together as a board. And then, once we have some ideas about that, need to hear back from the community. And, and it's very important to me that people understand we don't have unlimited sources of funds. We just don't. So, for whatever else we want to change to improve on one area of the system, like the start time and the transportation, we're going to cut something else to make it happen. And it's just important that we acknowledge that. And we talked a tiny bit about it at our off-camera meeting, but we did not have the time to go into it in the depth that we need to at this point.
Director Waters, you're exactly correct. We would, you know, being that any sort of additional revenue would be redirected from our general fund, and being at 85% of our general fund are the, the humans that work every single day to meet the needs of our students, probably one of the first places that we would look is how do we redirect funds out of that 85%, the largest part of our, our general fund.
Superintendent Osai, would you be willing to talk a little bit about what the process is that Community Education and Lisa Green is going through to address some of the concerns that folks have had about Kids Place costs and availability?
Vice Chair Tomback, there are a number of different things that Community Ed is currently in the process of doing. There, they've, one of the pieces that they've done is they've gone out and spoken to other school districts that have recently experienced similar changes, to learn from them about different strategies that they've used. And what, what we've learned, or what they've learned and what they've shared, is that other school districts that offered school-aged childcare and experienced this change, that they're still trying to ensure that they're able to meet the needs of all of their students. You know, they still have wait, wait lists. And, and what they are currently looking at is how can we create an attractive staffing model for school-aged childcare? Because currently, we have a school-aged childcare staffing model in which our school-aged childcare staff are receiving benefits, which makes it a very attractive position for, for community members. And with this type of change, it would most likely result in staff members not working, you know, enough hours to receive benefits, which could potentially impact our ability to find employees. So, another piece that they're looking at is what could a multi-tier, excuse me, option in the afternoon look like? Like a 2:30 to four, or, you know, and that's one option, a 2:30 to six. Really trying to explore different possibilities, recognizing that there are all sorts of implications in, in any model that, that is selected. One of the pieces that's a challenge for them is that until there's a decision made, it's hard for them to truly assess what the needs will be. Because in order for them to know what the needs will be, they'll need parents who are signing up. And until parents know what the outcome is, it'll be challenging for them to, to sign up. So, I don't know if that specifically answers all of the different pieces, but what I, what I would, what I would offer is that there are a lot of, currently, a lot of moving pieces that are, our Kids Place, our school-aged childcare, Community Ed staff is exploring.
That does answer that question. I think that, I would like to highlight the fact that when we had our earlier meeting, and we had the opportunity to chat a little bit with the elementary principals about these concerns, I just want to say that I was particularly impressed that without really expressing an opinion about what they wanted the board to do on this, that they were all very enthusiastic to say that these are opportunities that we have to look at different after-school programming options using targeted revenue dollars, that even among the concerns about our kids' safety, that there are opportunities there to engage older kids, to work with younger kids. I just, I was really impressed and grateful to our, all of our elementary principals for being so open-minded and enthusiastic about opportunities to innovate and problem solve in the situations.
Aston, the other, and you may have mentioned this, and I missed it, but the other piece around the childcare that I think some other districts have done and that we are talking about and considering, is there a way to combine some jobs so that you get the hours that are enough for people to have benefits, so that we can keep a stable, a stable childcare environment? Maybe it's with a parent and a childcare, or some other, some other ways to do that, that are being, that are under consideration?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you for elaborating. I think I may have summarized it as like, you know, creative staffing, but I appreciate your elaboration, because it is going to really...
your elaboration, because it is going to really require our community ed staff to work with human resources and look at where the opportunities exist to create positions that will be attractive to the people, our employment field, or employment, what's the word I'm looking for, really people seeking jobs. And as we also heard during that meeting, that unemployment right now is very low, which also creates challenges in trying to fill these type of positions.
I was just looking back at that slide on the kind of summary of concerns and support. And so we've talked about childcare, we talked a little bit about this early morning bus stop. So athletics is the third one, and I just wanted to know if you could give a little summary of sort of what we know about any plans for the challenges or opportunities, I guess, either way, on these two, on these two plans for athletics.
Yeah, thank you for the question. As I've heard our athletic director, Andy Ewald, talk about this, there certainly will be implications for middle school students participating, particularly in 7-12 athletics. What he described earlier is that, you know, we would really have to look at how we're, what we're currently offering 7-12. There may have to be a consideration of not offering as many sports 7-12, or if we're going to continue to offer the current slate of sports that we offer 7-12, that we would have to look at the start time of those sports, and recognizing that we would have to delay those practices in order to allow enough time for our middle school students to arrive at the high school, which then would require us to come up with, you know, creative programming to meet the needs of our high school students during that gap. So what I heard him say and continue to say is that certainly there are challenges, but that, you know, we can figure out a way to meet the needs of our students, and it may require us to kind of change our current model. It just depends on what the participation levels are and interest in those different athletic activities.
Thanks. We did have a sort of robust document in our packet this week about just the value of extracurricular activities and athletics, in particular for middle school and high school students. So I just wanted to make sure that we identified that as a priority and something that we felt was, that the questions were on the table, so thanks.
I don't know if we said this clearly on camera, but the board met for an hour and a half before we came into this room and explored some of the pros and the concerns on the various proposals, and had some robust conversation and questions, and got some information. So some of what we're doing is summarizing a little bit of that, so that we get that out there. And the other thing we heard, that I don't want to lose sight of, is the pluses in the recommendation, the classroom impact from particularly the middle school students who will be, in theory, more awake under the options proposed by the triangle option and the other square option. And the elementary principals, I think Mary said this, really believe that their students are ready to, awake and ready to learn earlier than middle school and high school students are, and that the recommendations recognize that. Could you speak a little bit to the value of having all four elementaries start at the same time, which I believe is proposed under both the square and the triangle?
Absolutely, and before I speak directly to that question, I just want to reiterate what you've shared around the overall academic impact. And, you know, as a project team, what led us to the recommendations that we made, we're about the overall health and academic, social-emotional impact of all of our students, recognizing that our middle school students, our adolescents, would be better prepared to learn, and also based on what we know about our elementary school-aged students, just their stamina throughout the day, that what we've learned from our, particularly our elementary principals and our elementary teachers, is that they really work hard to make sure things like math and reading are done first thing in the morning, recognizing that, you know, just developmentally, the stamina of our elementary students doesn't allow them to have the same level of engagement or focus towards the afternoon. So I've heard excitement from our elementary staff about getting students even earlier, which will help with some of the stamina challenges that we currently face under this model. As it relates to your question about the impact or the desire to have all of our elementary schools on the same tier, it really boils down to, one of the biggest factors in that recommendation was requests from our staff, particularly our elementary staff, around professional development and the desire to more effectively collaborate with our current structure. It continues to have, allow or cause park Spanish immersion staff not to be able to collaborate with colleagues and staff members at the other three elementary schools. And we've really been working hard to kind of create more of an international mindset amongst our elementary curriculum from the standpoint of not only IB, but immersion as well, and our staff are desirous to work together and to really start to be more in alignment in what we're offering.
Well, I just want to thank Sarah. You put a lot of time and effort, and we're really grateful to you and Tom, to you and Aston and the whole project team for bringing us this far, and we'll talk about it again in two weeks.
Thank you, Chair Gores, members of the board. And if I could just echo your sentiments of significant and sincere gratitude to Sarah, our project team members, all of our staff have worked extremely hard on this process, recognizing that the charge that we were set out with and wanting to be responsive to the needs of community and to each of you. I know that I, over the past couple of weeks, have asked a lot of them, and they're probably tired of me, and they're probably wanting to pull my hair out if I had any, so thankfully I don't. But I just want to thank you all. I want to thank K-12 Transportation. They've been tremendous partners in helping us in making sure that we have information in a timely and responsive manner. So thank you.
All right, and next up, we're going to have the school board listening session recap. There was a, there was a listening session on March 18th, 2019, and we did note it as a special meeting, so any board member who was in town and able to go could attend. Otherwise, we're limited to three. And Mary was, I was out of town, so Mary was chaired it, and we'll do the quick summary.
I think that there were about 40 to 50 people in attendance, does that seem about right? And thank you so much to every single one of those people for coming out that night and for sharing with us their thoughts and concerns, asking great questions, as I said that night. Really, no one asked any questions that we have not been asking ourselves, or not been asking of the administrators, or that the community hasn't asked of Superintendent Osai at other forums, but it was still really great to hear people's passion and robustness, and to really understand what was on the minds of the people who came out. And it was really the same thing that Sarah mentioned. I think the themes that we heard pretty loud and clear were concerns about children's, kids' place availability and pricing, the importance of the middle school academic bus activities, options, and participation in athletics, and then making sure that the health, welfare, health and welfare needs of our elementary schoolers were just as important as the health and welfare needs of our adolescents and high schoolers. So again, just more of the same conversation that's being had. Thank you very much to everybody who came out, and for Susan Lindgren for hosting us, and it worked out well. A lot of people were able to come and share their thoughts and questions with us, and then go check out all the great things Chef Marshall was doing. So I think that it was a great evening. Thank you.
And next up, we have the fiscal year 20 achievement and integration budget.
Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board. I'm going to keep my comments brief and really high-level. If you have questions, I'll just create some space at the end of this presentation to answer those at that time. As you all are aware, in 2017, we entered into a achievement and integration plan, a multi-year plan that actually concludes June 30th of 2020. So next school year, we'll be, we'll have the opportunity to develop a new plan. The budget that was presented to you in the board packet and the high-level overview in front of you just provides a summary of how those achievement and integration funds are being used. As you, as you heard our finance advisory committee members talk about earlier, we have 27 different buckets of revenue, and this is one of them, that has specific requirements around this, around this use. So know that we, as a school district, must create goals to use these funds that reduce disparities in academic achievement among students in specific categories of students, specifically excluding the categories of gender disability and English learners for increasing racial and economic integration. So the goals, we have two goals connected to the use of these dollars. Those goals are around increased math proficiency and increased reading proficiency. The achievement and integration revenue requires us to spend at least 80% of that revenue on what are considered direct student support type of activities or interventions, up to 20% or no more than 20% on professional development, and no more than 10% on indirect cost. So as you'll see with the proposed budget, we've fulfilled all of those expectations based on the budget ratios. And in many respects, being that this is the last year of this plan, what we've done from last year to this year, if you look at both budgets, you'll see a lot of similarity, except for some slight increased cost around staffing where necessary, because in this type of budget, we have to put actual costs, not, you know, projected FTE costs, being that it's a direct revenue stream from the state. So do you have any questions for me at this time?
And Aston, the total achievement and integration budget is around $867,000.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Seeing no questions, we're going to move on to policy development. First policy readings. Wait for you to get back, Aston. 719 Student Insurance Program, seven, we'll just take them one at a time. 719 Student Insurance Program.
So the three, well, this policy and the other two policies that we'll look at shortly are not what we would consider MSBA policies or MSBA-required policies. These are what we can describe as local school district policies. So there are no new recommendations regarding the policy language. Any sort of changes would just be based on change in practice by staff or change in overall governance or belief from the board. So what I'll, what we'll ask is, we plan on moving these policies forward as they're currently written, not unless the school board has some beliefs around changing those. So what we'll be doing is bringing those back as written at the next meeting.
And since we're kind of considering them together in that regard, I think for the next meeting, I would appreciate just hearing from Patricia, if we can, specifically on policy 799, just to hear from you, whether you would advise any changes, modifications, or anything that we should consider on that one in specific.
And I would, I would add to policy 719, I think we last looked at this in 2006, and since then, I think that we have moved to refer to parents and guardians. And so I would suggest that we just make that addition, so we're consistent with our other policy language. And then the other policy we have is policy 721, there's memorials and memorial activities for deceased students and staff, and we adopted it in 2016, after we'd had a rather rough go of it in the district, and learned from our painful experience with this work in.
I can't find it right now, but I believe there's a bill in the legislature right now to require boards to, or just school districts to adopt a policy on student memorials. So we're ahead of the game.
So seeing no more comments, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the second reading of policy 709, school transportation and safety and 714 fund balances.
Chair Gores, at our last meeting, what you'll notice is that the majority, particularly as it relates to seven, to the transportation policy, that the biggest changes or recommendations around changes from MSBA were directly related to what we consider our procedure. So we've reviewed those recommendations, and a lot of the recommendations are really technical things around driver requirement, driver training, things that, you know, cell phone use while driving, things that, you know, since the last time we updated the policy have changed. The recommendations, the items in red, I'm recommending that we move those forward as it just strengthens our procedure language. So that's the, that's the transportation policy. And then the other policy that we reviewed last time was our fund balance policy, and you heard our finance advisory committee members this evening reference the fact that next year, as a financial advisory committee, that we would like to take some time and study our fund balance. So what we would like to do, we would recommend the board approving it this evening, recognizing that we'll be coming back next school year with some recommendations to adjust our current board recommended fund balance.
So I'm just asking, Aston, about the red that is in brackets is going to come out, that stabilization arrangements will not be in what we will be moving forward at the end of the meeting. And then it also calls for an annual review of the sufficiency of the minimum on a son general fund balance level. Is that, Patricia, is that advisable? Can we do that just as part of our normal budget process?
Yeah, I think that's an appropriate and great thing to do.
All right, we're moving along to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull off for a discussion? Hearing from no one, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Second by Ken, all in favor? Aye, opposed, passes 70. Action agenda, student fees. It is recommended that the board approve the student fee increases for fiscal year 2020 as presented. Is there a motion? Is that Joe? Is there a second? Karen, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 70. Student transportation service agreement. It is recommended that the school board approve the one-year contract extension with Mainline Transportation, Inc., for special education transportation services for fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion? Move by Mary, is there a second? Second by Ann, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 70. Next is the American Indian Annual Compliance Agreement. It is recommended that the school board approve the annual compliance agreement with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Is there a motion? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Second by Ken, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I just want to say, it's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful program. I really appreciate all the things that they are doing. And there's more that they're doing, other than what we just talked about up there on stage. So great, 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 great activities are going on.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 70. Next is the AT&amp;T Cell Phone Tower. It is recommended that the school board approve the terms of the first amendment to the lease agreement with the new singular wireless PCS, which is managed by AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation. Probably needs someone to talk with us about that.
Yes, Chair Gores and members of the board, Superintendent Osai, this is the existing cell phone tower that's on the roof of Cedar Manor. And as I outlined in the memo, we were approached by AT&amp;T with a request to reduce our lease payments, the payments that we were receiving from them, or that they might have to remove the tower. And in a few months of negotiations, we landed on keeping the lease rate as it is and retaining the tower then on the roof. So this agreement then would renew that lease for an extended period of time. So this agreement then would renew that lease for an extended period of time.
Any questions or count us before?
I just, I'm just surprised that they would want to reduce our lease and have the risk of taking it away and somebody else coming into their spot for the same price. It just doesn't make financial sense to me. But anyway. I don't know, maybe we shouldn't have negotiated for a higher price.
Do you know how long the leases? I don't remember having.
I know that it renews in 2030, and we can renew it for five-year extensions after that.
Thank you. Right, is there a motion to approve the lease change? Moved by Mary, is there a second? Seconded by Karen, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 70. Next, we have approval of the Fiscal Year 20 Achievement and Integration Budget. It is recommended that the school board approve the Fiscal Year 20 Achievement and Integration Budget as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Jim, is there a second? Second by Ann, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 70. Next, we have policy development, second reading, 709 Student Transportation Safety and 714 Fund Balances. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of Policy 709, School Transportation and Safety, and 714 Fund Balances. Is there a motion? Is that Joe? Moved by Joe, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 70. Communications and Transmittals.
But it's short. Last week, CAC held their event on food insecurity. It was a panel discussion that was originally scheduled in February, right? And we were snowed out, and we had a lovely turnout. And I wanted to highlight two of our high school students who work for, volunteer with the bird feeder, who, Victoria and Mushthak, who did just an unbelievably authentic and wise and thoughtful job talking about the bird feeder and the barriers to access for food for students at our high school and the impact of hunger at our high school and in our schools sort of generally. I just was blown away. I could not have been more proud of our two students. On a panel with professionals who do this work as their day jobs, they absolutely held their own and I would say elevated the conversation. They got big applause. Just wonderful. So I sent them a note just to give my appreciation, and I wanted to do that again here. So that's what I've got.
Well, I'll just say, since I've been having new questions about the school start timing this meeting, that I'm far from having made out of my mind. So I'd still encourage people to contact any of the board members. Personally, I'd even be available for a longer phone conversation or even coffee if you wanted. I might have a more favorable work schedule than others. I'm not guaranteeing everyone could do that, but certainly still contact your school board member if you want to talk about it.
So I had an opportunity to be away for a week and read The Boy Who Harvested the Wind. Let me say that again, The Boy Who Harvested the Wind. And I just, having sat through the Roots and Shoots presentation, I just wanted to comment on that at this meeting. Wonderful memoir by William Kamkamba, K-A-M-K-W-A-M-B-A, and another author. He's from Africa and grew up in a wonderful but poor family in a poorer village and had learned by going to the library when he couldn't afford to go to school and read enough books to figure out electricity and think about wind power and find stuff in the junkyard and build the first windmill and then get some publicity about it and get invited to a TED Talk and get some sponsors and move on and have an amazing education. And it's a gripping, it's a good story, and it's also a movie if you're not a read, it's also a movie. But someone said it's so sad, you turn it off, and the book didn't come across that way, so that might be a better option. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mary says yes. Is there a second? Seconded by Ann, all in favor? 70. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for staying with us. This one went a little bit longer than we'd hoped.